Call the Oatana City Council meeting to order for December 16th. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Dotson.
Here.
Okerberg.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Burbank.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Svenby.
Here.
Abraham.
Here.
Mayor Coontz.
Here.
We have all seven of the council members and the mayor present.
Thank you. Please rise and join us in the political allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the body for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have one addition, and this would be the oath of office done for by the mayor, and with that, we would let you go to that.
As we had a resignation on the EDA, Dale Bowers, and we have found a replacement,
Thank you. And what is the council's wishes on this?
So, any motion?
We have a motion by Brent, second by Nate, to approve the appointment, and with that, questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved.
Put the council's approval on. You come up to Al, and we'll do the oath of office. If you can have your stand over here, so we can catch you on that beautiful screen.
Yes. And raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Al Bankston.
Aye, Al Bankston.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The laws of the city of Oatana.
The laws of the city of Oatana.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of the Office of Economic Development Authority.
Duties of the Office of Economic Development Authority.
Of the city of Oatana.
Of the city of Oatana.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
To the best of my knowledge and abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my knowledge and abilities, so help me God.
Al, welcome to board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulations. And with that, now, I'll step back and look for a motion to approve the agenda with that addition.
So moved.
Motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okerberg. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Moving on to the financial report, and I will ask Greg to read the financial report.
Okay, I'll give a recap of checks over $20,000 and then the total. First check is for $46,867 to Gopher Sport, that is their TIF payment. $62,986 to Businessware for 14 police squad car laptops. $22,706 to Mansfield Oil Company for fuel purchases. $20,460 to Visu Sewer for sewer cleaning. $118,176 to the Southeast Service Cooperative, that is the December health insurance premium. Other expenditures of $367,844, or a subtotal of $639,040. Add to that the Section 8 payments of $56,878, for our total expenditures presented for approval tonight, of $695,918.78.
Thank you, Greg. What is the comments or questions from the council?
Comments?
Yes, Dave.
Is there any value to the old police computers, or once they go out of service, that they're pretty much done?
Ryan of our RIT department does reuse those as he sees fit, as they fit within, you know, needs within our department, so we recycle.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to pay the bills.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to pay the bills. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate Dotson. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda items, which are minutes of meetings, license permit requests, board commission meeting minutes, department reports, and contract agreements grouped into one motion. What is the council's wishes here?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Just wanted to talk about the garbage hauler permits. I know the amount is $10 per vehicle. I think maybe that should be reviewed. I also think our whole, maybe our garbage collection ordinance should have a look taken at. I know we've talked about it before, and I'd just like to pursue that a little more.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Dave?
I think we're on the same wavelength, Greg. I had sent an email to Chris regarding that one. And I'd also like, after the first of the year, possibly, we can look at the other fees that places pay. I don't think that's been reviewed for a number of years.
Okay.
For the garbage haulers, not the only one, the taxi cab, the tobacco license, perhaps the in-kind services that are provided by Park and Rec when they have to set up bleachers and things for dances, things of that nature. I think, I think we're falling behind on some of that, and I hate to play catch-up where all of a sudden, we have to hit people with a massive increase. So I think it's time to start taking baby steps towards helping pay.
I think we should be looking at that, and I think if we could set up a study session to start looking at some of those.
Certainly.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I had the same comment. Thirty-one garbage trucks going up and down our roads. I think it's costing us more in handling the paperwork than the $10 charge, so I agree we need to look at that come January.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that? Chair will entertain a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Dave Burbank to approve the consent agenda items. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate Dotson. Any further discussion at this point? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This is approved. And we will now move on to action items, which is 3.11, Resolution 84-14, to approve the 2015 budget, and we'll go start with Chris.
Thank you, Les. This is the culmination of a long process for staff and for council, and I want to thank all my department heads, and especially Rhonda, for putting in the extra time necessary to bring this budget to you. I think we've done, we've worked really hard and put together what we feel is a reasonable budget that delivers critical city services at a most efficient cost. And I will let Rhonda take it from here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. This actually relates to three resolutions, and the purpose of the resolutions are to adopt the final levy amounts for the city and for the HRA, and also to approve the final budget. Back on September 2nd, the council approved a preliminary levy that was a 4.03% increase over the 2014 levy amount. The preliminary budget was also approved at that time. The HRA levy was approved at $130,000, which is $10,000 more than it was in recent years. The current year levy increase follows a cumulative increase of only 2.65% over the last five years. There have been some minor adjustments made to the budget, which were reviewed with council on November 25th. The levy increase has now been reduced to 3.92%. The budget was presented to the public on December 2nd, and that is what is now presented to the council for approval. Staff recommends approval of the following three resolutions.
Thank you. Thank you, Rhonda. Very good job, too.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council?
The only question I do have is, I was going to review what the general fund expenditures were from 2013, and I see they're not on the website, the budget from '13. Looks like we have already the year, but '13.
The 2013 actual budget?
Yes. You go on the, I was looking, I was going to review that, and I see we've got, unless it's hiding somewhere else, there was 10, 11, 12, and then we didn't have a 13 on there.
Okay, I'll take a look at that. I'll take a look at that. That surprises me. I thought it was out there.
Do you have any idea what, off the top of your head, then, what the general fund expenditures were?
I can tell you.
Well, you have them there, all right.
I don't have to tell you that, though. You want the budgeted expenditures for '13?
Yeah, the general fund.
General fund budgeted expenditures for '13 were $15,350,230.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? One of the things that we did do is, when we looked at the original budget increase was a 4.03, we had looked at the possibility of what we would do if we did approve it at that, and what we would do with the different money, that money, which would be about $10,000. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Possibility of earmarking that for certain projects, so we can have the choice of either approving it at the 4.03 and using that extra 10 for whatever projects, street projects in particular, or approving it at the 3.92. So, questions from the council?
I think I'd throw it back to Kyle. What's your opinion on, are we falling behind on infrastructure? How far behind?
You're asking the Public Works Director if we need to spend more money, and the answer is yes.
Anyone else? Kyle, do you have any more to say?
We can always use more in the maintenance account.
Okay. Well, what we will be doing is, we will take each one of these, the next three in succession, and make a motion and vote on those. What is the council's wishes at this point?
I'd make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 8414, budget for year 2015.
At the?
At the 3.92%.
At the 3.92%. We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve at that 3.92. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving on to Resolution 8614, authorizing 2015 HRA levy, and what is the council's wishes there?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also, which brings the budget to final approval, and thank you very much for, both of you, for doing this job. Moving on to Resolution 8714, order feasibility report on Mineral Springs Parkway project, and that will go to Kyle.
Les, I'd like to recuse myself from this.
Okay. And stated that Greg Schultz is recusing himself from this motion. Kyle?
Good evening. Before you have, I'll cover both resolutions, but the first one is for the 2015 Mineral Springs Parkway project. That project would be from Cherry Street to Mineral Springs Road, and it's a project that we brought before the council last year, but it was delayed until 2015. The total estimated cost is $624,000 for that project. The second resolution is for the 2015 LeMond Road project. That is considerably different than the previous LeMond Road projects that have been brought forward. It's about a third of the size. It's only from Selby to Kim. We'd be looking at a total estimated cost of about $727,000 on that, and we expect to bring the feasibility reports to the council on the January 6th meeting, and recommend approval.
Thank you. Questions from the council? What is the council's wishes on 8714, Mineral Springs Parkway?
Motion to approve Resolution 8714.
We have a motion by Brent Svenby to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okerberg. Any further discussion there?
Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving on to Resolution 8914, authorizing 2015 HRA levy, and what is the council's wishes there?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also, which brings the budget to final approval, and thank you very much for, both of you, for doing this job. Moving on to Resolution 8714, order feasibility report on Mineral Springs Parkway project, and that will go to Kyle.
Les, I'd like to recuse myself from this.
Okay. And stated that Greg Schultz is recusing himself from this motion. Kyle?
Good evening. Before you have, I'll cover both resolutions, but the first one is for the 2015 Mineral Springs Parkway project. That project would be from Cherry Street to Mineral Springs Road, and it's a project that we brought before the council last year, but it was just delayed until 2015. The total estimated cost is $624,000 for that project. The second resolution is for the 2015 LeMond Road project. That is considerably different than the previous LeMond Road projects that have been brought forward. It's about a third of the size. It's only from Selby to Kim. We'd be looking at a total estimated cost of about $727,000 on that, and we expect to bring the feasibility reports to the council on the January 6th meeting, and recommend approval.
Thank you. Questions from the council? What is the council's wishes on 8714, Mineral Springs Parkway?
Motion to approve Resolution 8714.
We have a motion by Brent Svenby to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
I'll go with the new guy. We have a second by Jeff Okerberg. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With this, we will move on to Resolution 8814, which is a feasibility report on LeMond Road project, and Greg has rejoined us.
Motion to approve, 8814.
We have a motion by Dave Burbank to approve LeMond Road, 8814. Do we have a second to that?
I second.
Second by Jeff Okerberg. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving on down to Resolution 8914, to accept land donation from Oscar Whiskey Alpha. Troy?
I'll take that one. Public Works has been working with the landowner on this for probably a year to resolve how to handle this, and we're recommending that the city of Oatana accept the donation of this parcel of land, which contains a stormwater retention pond. The pond was constructed as part of the Cabela's development in, I think it was '86, '87 timeframe, excuse me, '96 or '97 timeframe. We believe that the original intention was to convey this pond to the city. The pond serves over 50 acres of commercial development. It's serving quite a large area, and, you know, if this were done today, we feel that it would have, there would have been an agreement in place to transfer it to the city. So, annual costs, we expect that we will have some mowing costs. There's some erosion in the drainage way down to the pond that needs to be addressed. The landowner addressed it previously, and then it came back, and that's water from off-site. That's not water from this particular property. It would be from the hotels and the other development further to the south. So, we feel that that's a public responsibility to fix. So, initially, there'll be a little bit of repair for erosion, and then annual maintenance costs aren't expected to exceed $5,000, mowing it a few times a year, and, you know, keeping the outlet clean. So, we recommend approval.
Thank you, Kyle. Questions from the council?
Question. Kyle, I was just curious, it's going on 20 years old, this pond. What's the condition of the pond, and how soon is it going to have to be dredged, and that kind of thing?
We have been out and inspected it. I didn't do it myself, but I asked a stormwater manager to go out and do that. It appears to be in pretty good shape. We did not contour the bottom to determine dredging, but overall, it's been maintained. The current owner, when they purchased the property, did quite a bit of maintenance work to, you know, bring it back to being in good condition. And as I mentioned, the erosion that's occurred there was repaired, but it came back, and that's not water that's coming from this property. So, we kind of feel that's a public responsibility to take care of that, and we do collect quite a bit of stormwater fees from the businesses that are served by those ponds, so.
Thank you. Brent, you have a question?
Kyle, do we have, is there adequate access to get back to that pond and stuff for maintenance purposes?
Yep, we have 80 feet of property that will become ours along the west side, running north and south, and then there's also access easement just north of the Let's Ride entrance. So, we feel we've got adequate access, and then I believe there might even be access from the north.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? What is the council's wishes? Chair will entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Thank you. Now, we move on to Resolution 9014, consent to change of control, FCC Charter Communications, and this will go to Chris.
Thank you, Les. We're requesting approval of Resolution 9014, conditionally consenting to Charter Communications corporate restructure. Charter Communications is in the process of a corporate reorganization and a merger. They are requesting the city's consent to this transaction, which is a requirement under the Cable Communication Policy Act. This law also provides that the franchising authority must not unreasonably withhold approval. In this type of transaction, the franchising authority reviews the legal, technical, and financial qualifications of the new company that will hold the franchise. We've had our attorney, Robert Voss, retained to review this rather complicated transaction for the city, and I have attached his full report for your review. Bob did have some concerns regarding Charter's ability to meet performance obligations in light of this large expansion of operations, and has included some several conditions in our resolution, which will provide protections for the city of Oatana. Budget impact is none, and we would recommend, as does our attorney, Bob Voss, approval of Resolution 9014.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions from the council?
Is Charter aware of the conditions we're setting, and we haven't heard any issues with that?
Right.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate Dotson to approve. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. Any further discussion here? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Thank you. Moving on to contracts and agreements, is a routine maintenance agreement with Steel County, and this will go to Kyle.
Good evening. Public Works has been working with Steel County for at least the last year to work out a routine maintenance agreement. We plow several county roads within the city. The previous maintenance agreement was from 1991 and was considerably out of date. We've reached an agreement that we're both comfortable with. It's, the payment actually changes based on the amount of expenditure per year, and there's approximately $30,000 more in revenue in 2013 over the amount that was billed in 2012. So, we feel we've moved forward quite a bit, and recommend approval. There are a couple of.
Yeah. Les, if I might just, we've had the agreement reviewed by our attorney, and we have just a couple of minor tweaks that I visited with Anita Benson about, and also, we forwarded that to Dan McIntosh. We don't feel it's a major change to the spirit of the agreement. It's just a consistency issue in terms of indemnification language, and also, just some additional, on that Section 2.300 maintenance responsibilities, including some additional language there. So, we would recommend approval with those changes.
With the changes, okay. Questions from the council? What is, Greg?
I'd just like to thank Kyle and Chris, because I know they have worked diligently for a long time to put this agreement together, and I think a public thank you is due them on this, and with that, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Thank you, Greg. We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate Dotson. Any further discussions from the council? Myself included, Chris, and Kyle, this is something that we've been looking for for a long time, and with your hard work, we've got it now, so thank you. And seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved with those minor corrections. Moving on to miscellaneous items to the table, proposed assessment, 2014 improvements, and this will go to Chris.
No, actually, we're going to go to Kyle.
To Kyle, okay.
At the, on October 21st, we held a public hearing for the proposed assessments for the 2014 Street and Utility Project in front of the council. There were two objectors at that meeting, and one in, well, I think they both appeared in person. We have reached a resolution with both of those, and have agreements with them, and are recommending approval for those to be certified to the county.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions from the council? This was an item that we just received, the information at the meeting here tonight. What is the council's wishes on this?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Dave Burbank to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okerberg. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved, and we do have an agreement with them. Moving on to the sign and retroreflective policy. Kyle?
Good evening. The city of Oatana is required to have a sign maintenance policy in place, specifically, some items that it addresses are retroreflectivity, which is how well the signs show up at night. So, this policy is establishing how we're going to be handling signage, and along with this policy, we had previously adopted a deaf, blind, and autistic child policy. This would remove that policy and incorporate it within the sign policy. So, we would be eliminating the previous autistic child policy, sign policy, and incorporating it basically word for word within the sign policy. So, this policy does promote a uniform method of establishing signs, and also for sign removal for unnecessary signs. We have a lot of signs out there that aren't regulatory and don't need to be there. They've exceeded their useful life, and we feel we'd actually be better off to remove them. This would be, there would be an engineering study on any signs removed. Any regulatory signs, such as stop signs, would come before the council, before any removal would occur. So, we do recommend approval, and open for any questions.
Thank you, Kyle. Speaking of signs, I was down on Broadway and East Park Street.
East Park Square.
There's, we would ask for a yield sign on the eastbound on Broadway.
I'll check into that. I know council approved it previously.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate Dotson to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. We will now move on to public comment, and if anyone would like to speak, please come to the microphone and sign in, and we will give you two minutes to speak on anything that is not on the agenda tonight.
My name is Roger Plath, 1240 Robin Hood Lane, southeast Oatana. I didn't get to the last meeting. I was out of town, but I have some real serious concerns about our Steel County assessor, about his ability to properly and equally assess tax values in town. And I have talked to a number of city people, and they say, basically, it's kind of out of their hands because he's a county employee. Well, but we do have the issue, when we bring our concerns to the tax equalization, we have to come before the city first, and some of the issues that have arisen since he's come on board, for example, two years ago, I had a concern about the lack of equality in taxing bear lots, for example, in town. We have a development called Majestic Oaks. At the time, I brought that to the attention of public officials. I told the tax assessor, he was way under assessed compared to other properties in town. And after going to the state, getting a letter. We have a motion by Nate Dotson to approve. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. Any further discussion here? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Thank you. Moving on to contracts and agreements, is a routine maintenance agreement with Steel County, and this will go to Kyle.
Good evening. Public Works has been working with Steel County for at least the last year to work out a routine maintenance agreement. We plow several county roads within the city. The previous maintenance agreement was from 1991 and was considerably out of date. We've reached an agreement that we're both comfortable with. It's, the payment actually changes based on the amount of expenditure per year, and there's approximately $30,000 more in revenue in 2013 over the amount that was billed in 2012. So we feel we've moved forward quite a bit, and recommend approval. There are a couple of.
Yeah. Les, if I might just, we've had the agreement reviewed by our attorney, and we have just a couple of minor tweaks that I visited with Anita Benson about, and also we forwarded that to Dan McIntosh. We don't feel it's a major change to the spirit of the agreement. It's just a consistency issue in terms of indemnification language, and also just some additional, on that Section 2.300 maintenance responsibilities, including some additional language there. So we would recommend approval with those changes.
With the changes, okay. Questions from the council? What is, Greg?
I'd just like to thank Kyle and Chris, because I know they have worked diligently for a long time to put this agreement together. And I think a public thank you is do them on this. With that, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Thank you, Greg. We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dotson. Any further discussions from the council? Myself included, Chris and Kyle, this is something that we've been looking for, for a long time. And with your hard work, we've got it now, so thank you. And seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved with those minor corrections. Moving on to miscellaneous items to the table, proposed assessment, 2014 improvements, and this will go to Chris.
No, actually, we're going to go to Kyle.
To Kyle, okay.
At the, on October 21st, we held a public hearing for the proposed assessments for the 2014 Street and Utility Project in front of the council. There were two objectors at that meeting, one in, well, I think they both appeared in person. We have reached a resolution with both of those, and have agreements with them, and are recommending approval for those to be certified to the county.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions from the council? This was an item that we just received, the information at the meeting here tonight. What is the council's wishes on this?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Dave Burbank to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okerberg. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved, and we do have an agreement with them. Moving on to the sign and retroreflective policy. Kyle?
Good evening. The City of Oatana is required to have a sign maintenance policy in place. Specifically, some items that it addresses are retroreflectivity, which is how well the signs show up at night. So this policy is establishing how we're going to be handling signage. And along with this policy, we had previously adopted a deaf, blind, and autistic child policy. This would remove that policy and incorporate it within the sign policy. So we would be eliminating the previous autistic child policy, sign policy, and incorporating it basically word for word within the sign policy. So this policy does promote a uniform method of establishing signs, and also for sign removal for unnecessary signs. We have a lot of signs out there that aren't regulatory and don't need to be there. They've exceeded their useful life, and we feel we'd actually be better off to remove them. This would be, there would be an engineering study on any signs removed. Any regulatory signs, such as stop signs, would come before the council, before any removal would occur. So we do recommend approval, and open for any questions.
Thank you, Kyle. Speaking of signs, I was down on Broadway and East Parks.
East Park Square.
There's, we would ask for a yield sign on the eastbound on Broadway.
I'll check into that. I know council approved it previously.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate Dotson to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. We will now move on to public comment, and if anyone would like to speak, please come to the microphone and sign in, and we will give you two minutes to speak on anything that is not on the agenda tonight.
My name is Roger Plath, 1240 Robin Hood Lane, southeast Oatana. I didn't get to the last meeting, I was out of town, but I have some real serious concerns about our Steel County assessor, about his ability to properly and equally assess tax values in town. And I have talked to a number of city people, and they say basically, it's kind of out of their hands because he's a county employee. Well, but we do have the issue when we bring our concerns to the tax equalization, we have to come before the city first. And some of the issues that have arisen since he's come on board, for example, two years ago, I had a concern about the lack of equality in taxing bear lots, for example, in town. We have a development called Majestic Oaks. At the time, I brought that to the attention of public officials. I told the tax assessor, he was way under assessed compared to other properties in town. And after going to the state, getting a letter, I would call it a reprimand or to-do list, so to speak, we found that that development alone was under assessed by close to $700,000. So he wasn't too accurate. And I had one example where I told him, one lot was $12,000, lot right next to it was $42,000. The only difference is, the blacktop stopped at the property lines. So the one lot at 12 didn't have blacktop. The other lot had blacktop, and it was $42,000. I asked him how much the cost of blacktop was, and he didn't even know. It's about $6,000 a foot, so that lot should have been, if you add $6,000, it would be 18 versus 42, which makes it twice. He was also told at that time to make a study, to make sure that lots were properly being assessed when we have a bear lot, and then we have another lot with a house on it next to it. There's been some really large differences. There's an area in North Town called, I think it's Oak Place or something like that. They have eight lots. They were all bare, they were all assessed at $12,000. They build, two lots have a townhome built on them, and they go to $23,000. The next year, they go to $32,000. So the same lots, $12,000, with the townhomes, they're $32,000. I have a neighbor next to me, all the lots, all of the property in Sherwood Heights last year, except the railroad track lots, their lot values went up 35% in one year. I find that hard to imagine, when you look at how many lot sales we have and how depressed they are. I bought one lot back, and I paid one-third of what the guy originally bought it for me for. I paid one-third, and I says, "That should be a comp." He says, "No, you can't use that comp." And I says, "Well, the guy had it listed for three years. He had this lot listed with a realtor for three years. It's one of the best lots in town. The guy calls me and says, 'I need to sell that lot.'" And I says, "I can't sell the 12 I got. What do I want with another lot?" He keeps calling me and calling me, and ultimately, I paid him one-third, which is about what you would pay for the assessments of the lot, one of the best lots in town. That lot sits right next to Mike O'Neal's lot, and he's been here before, and his lot is twice as high, and we need to bring those into line with the way they should be. And Sherwood Heights was increased 35%, but you go to North Bluff, you go to Majestic Oaks, and you go to Malcolm Hall's lots, they all went up less than 1%. Ours went up 35%. That'll make sense. And I think we had some people here last week, or the last meeting, having issues with this, too. He was reprimanded. He didn't take care of part of that. The second part, he did not adjust at all. And so I'd like to have a task force formed by the city, sit down and discuss these things. Since he's come on board, he's tried to more than double the assessed value of my lots, more than double in the most depressed economy for lots ever to hit this town. And back to that one lot that I said I bought for one-third, I says, "Why can't you, you won't even use that as a comp?" The response from him and the state was, "You can't use that as a comp because the seller didn't get what he thought his property was worth." And I says, "Are you for real?" I says, "If that's the case, then in the last five years, you probably don't have any comps, because very few people have got what they thought their property was worth in the last five years." So I think we need a task force. If there's any further questions, I'd certainly like to be a part of that.
I think we need to talk to Chris and see what we can do with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Roger.
Seeing none, we'll move on to council comments, and with that, we'll start with Nate.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Jeff?
Merry Christmas also.
Greg?
Merry Christmas, and have a safe and happy holidays.
And we'll skip Kevin. We'll. Kevin?
I appreciate that I can.
Get to talking.
Yeah, first Christmas to everyone. I recently finished up going through the Citizens Academy, through the police department, and just want to say that Chief Hiller and his staff did an excellent job. It was very engaging, and I would encourage city council, if you're interested, I'll go through it next year. It's a very learning experience, and time went fast, so.
Thank you, Kevin.
I think I can find a junior police badge somewhere. We'll present that to you.
Brent?
Merry Christmas and a happy new year.
Thank you. Merry Tom?
Just Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Chris?
Same for me. And just a reminder, the city offices will be closed on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day.
Thank you. And how about Mark?
Merry Christmas, everyone. Thank you.
And a Merry Christmas from me to everyone here, and to the residents of Oatana, and I wish you all a very, very prosperous new year. And with that, chair will look for a motion to adjourn.
Some of.
Motion by Kevin Rainey to adjourn. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.